All right. Now that we've got a nice collected audience. Good morning, everybody. Sorry we're a little bit tardy today. Actually, we're quite a bit tardy, 45 minutes late. But at this time, I'm going to call to order the Washoe County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 21st, 2017 on this rainy, beautiful northern Nevada day. Thank you for joining us. Hopefully, everybody made the weather all right. Obviously, you're here and safe and sound. So, at this time, Ms. Scow, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Scow. All right. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Bob Lucy Chair.
Here.
Marsha Burke Bigler Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Ron Hartung.
Here.
Jamie Herman.
Here.
John Slaughter County Manager.
Present.
David Wattsfield Assistant or Deputy District Attorney.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, Chief Deputy Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Manager.
Ms. Chair, our next item is Public Comment, Item 3. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person, and they retain it matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, do we have a public comment?
We do. We have Ron McConnell, followed by Donna Clontz.
Good morning, Mr. McConnell.
My big right.
Mr. McConnell, can you state your name for the record, please?
Ron McConnell. I live at 6310 Leon Drive, Sun Valley, Nevada. I've lived here since 1970. I've seen it go to hell real fast by development. But anyway, Reno Disposal last week month put two barrels there. Told me I had to use their garbage cans because they wouldn't take the other. A single guy, no recycle. They up my bill eight bucks a month, and they won't do it. If you go out to dump out there to Sted, it's closed Sundays, Mondays. Wonder why all the garbage gets dumped out there? Garbage TVs, 50 bucks to take them off your hand. That's why you see them sitting around. So you guys need to quit giving, bowing to Reno Disposal or Waste Management and take care of the people, not big businesses. You know, they come in, you guys, I say you guys, the whole county, everything, seemed a rubber stamp. And I called to complain about it, thinking I was talking to somebody in Reno. And she asked me for my area code. I said, "Are you blonde?" "Well, I'm in Phoenix." Hey, where'd I call from? You know? Thinking I was talking to somebody in Reno. But she's telling me about Reno's plan, but not that. So anyway, it's just kind of a quick gripe. They should take more care of recycling, grass, leaves and stuff than worry about other stuff. So anyway, I thank you for your time, and I wish you all a very good day. Goodbye.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell.
Next up, we have Donna Clontz, and she has provided a handout.
Good morning, Ms. Clontz.
Good morning.
How are you, Donna?
Chair Lucy, doing fine.
Good.
In all this snow and rain and everything. I'm Donna Clontz. I live in Reno. I am on your Senior Services Advisory Board and also Chair of the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. And recently, we got a chance to take a look at the new codes that have been pending for the last many months to consolidate all of the departments into the Human Services Department. And in among all those things, we found some language that we were unaware of about changes to the Senior Citizen or Senior Services Advisory Board. And so we've had a chance to read through them. We've had a chance to talk to some staff. We've talked to all of you, most of you, about some of our concerns, and it's in the works to get it, get those concerns addressed. But I wanted to give the Commission the three things that the Committee or the Board would like to see changed from the draft that is out there right now in Section 45. So I've given you a copy of just the pages of the code that relate to this and a memo on the top, just telling you, we're suggesting that our Board go down to nine members. Five of them would be appointed, one from each district. Four would be at-large members. And right now, currently, we have a couple people who serve as alternates when someone is missing from a Board meeting. And in the draft, we saw that they had deleted the ex-official members, which we really value, which is a Commissioner, a member of the Sparks City Council, and a member of the Reno City Council that bring in their concerns about seniors and often help us solve problems when they're there and present. So we want to make sure those ex-officios get back in the code. Also, we noticed that reporting of our input was only supposed to go to the Department or the Division. And we would like it also, since you appoint us, to have that feedback also come to County Commission as well. I noticed when I was looking on the webpage that describes the Board, that it says our Board, the Senior Services Advisory Board, is constituted to advise the Department and the Commission on meeting the current and future needs of seniors, including, and then it lists the various things that you've asked us to do. So it's been up on our website, and we have been, as members of the group, before you a lot, telling you what we think and giving ideas about ways to make things better for seniors. So we think it's a good thing for you as well. And then the last thing is adding one role, one duty back that's been there throughout the years as well, that says that we would recommend and evaluate programs and policies. And we think that we bring a community viewpoint, and by being able to recommend programs and policies, that takes us into the place outside the system and gives you ideas that you might not otherwise get. So we thank you for the time. Looking forward to the 28th when it's on for first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clontz.
There's no more public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll bring it back to the Board. Mr. Manager. Item 4.
Ms. Chair, Commissioner Jung has a question?
Yes.
I just have a pomp and circumstance question. How come we don't have Managers and Board comments right here at number four? I feel like that fell off. And the reason why I like that right after public comment is so that I could address, like, Mr. McConnell's issue with Mace Management, direct Kevin Schiller to get with him, as well as let you know that Donna Clontz did reach out to me, and I'm not happy with the changes that seem were done to this Board without any Board involvement or appointment. And part of what I would like to see is, obviously, in that first reading, all of these suggestions included, and I know Wattsfield's freaking out because I'm talking off the agenda, but I'm trying not to. And I do want to bring this back under item number nine, and I think we need to start funding senior services that they have their own stipend as well.
Ms. Chair, yes. We could take item nine out of order at any time if you wanted to go to that item.
Oh, right. Can we go to there?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would you like to read item number nine, Mr. Manager?
I will.
Thanks, Wattsfield.
Item nine is Commissioner or County Manager's Announcements, Reports, and Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Addendas. And if I could, before that, I would, because it was mentioned the 28th, that item is not going to be on the 28th for a number of reasons, so it will be at a future time, that first reading.
Okay, great. Because we want to get it right anyways, Ms. Clontz. We can't read it wrong, and then the second reading change it. So I do, what I do want to know is to direct that Mr. Schiller reach out to Mr. McConnell and figure out, he has some erroneous information, I might add as well. And that we also take into consideration what the Senior Services Advisory Board has provided in terms of their objections to some deletions that were changed. And then finally, I think it's time that we give that Senior Service Advisory Board some money, that they can do projects, enhance senior living, whatever way that it goes. And please look at Sparks and Reno and their advisory boards and how much they give theirs to you. It's not that we have to be equal or, you know, I think that it's time that that Board has some more leverage to deal with senior issues that you know very well we can't take care of. So that's my announcement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So at this time, is there any other Commissioners that would like to take this at this time? Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. I mean, we'll just do this, we'll just get this out of the way right now. I received a late warning notice from the alarm company, which is, "We are reviewing their fees, so wait, it'll get better here for you." I did not receive a bill from them, so I called them immediately. Blessedly, I only remained on the phone for two and a half minutes, which was acceptable in my opinion. They told me that the reason that the bill was not delivered was weather-related, and someone else had told me that it was a malfunction, that they had told them that it was a malfunction of a piece of software. So they seemed to be concocting stories as to why I got this late notice. They were kind enough to waive the late fee. But my question is, here's my question. And this is, and we really, and so, and by the way, let me, I'll start backwards here because this is important. I asked to speak to a supervisor. They told me that there were none available. They took my name and my number, of course, and I did identify myself as a County Commissioner, and that someone would call me back. No one has called me back. And this was on the 16th, so no one's called me. I tried reaching out to the person that they recommended at the SO. She has not called me back. Russ Peterson, of course, has. So that part is good. But here's the real kicker in all of this. We pay $25 as, $24, rather, excuse me, $24 as an alarm registration fee, 12 of which goes to them, 12 of which goes to the SO. And I'm somewhat, I'm modestly okay with that, but I still think it's a bit of gouging. As a late fee, they charge $25. I would like to see an accounting of those late fees because the SO doesn't seem to think that they get them. So this, and this is, I believe it's Alarm Tracking and Billing.
ATB.
That's correct. ATB?
Colorado Springs.
Yep, in Colorado Springs. So I can't get them to call me back. Russ Peterson has not been able to get them to call him back. What I'm asking for is, almost straight away, I'd like to see a review from this company. I'd like to see some accounting. I don't, what I want to know is how many people have actually gotten this late notice and just paid it?
Yeah.
And then where does the money go? So I'm very concerned with this, and I have gotten several calls from constituents who were angry in somewhat similar circumstances, but each one is slightly different. So I think it's time that we review this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did, I realized that I did actually have one question. At some point in the past, we asked for an audit from the Cooperative Extension. I believe Commissioner Herman and I both asked for that on how our funds are being used and where they are going, and a full Board audit. We have not seen that yet, so if we could get that sooner rather than later, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burke Bigler. Commissioner Herman.
Yesterday, I was, I've been going out to Lemon Valley quite regularly here and checking it. And yesterday, you know, the flooding has just taken over the lower part of Lemon Valley. There's people that are living in town now at hotels, motels, and this sort of thing. And there's going to be quite a few homes if this water keeps rising. There's going to be a lot of them that are going to have, they're going to need a lot of work to be inhabitable again. I just want to put out a plea for this Commission to see if we can, even though we can't get FEMA funds, I've been told we can't get FEMA funds to help them because the damage isn't large enough or broad enough, didn't run into the dollars enough. But these people still are going to need the same kind of help as in an area where 5,000 homes went down. You know, it's just, maybe with the Governor's Emergency Funds or something like that, we should be able to get some help for these people. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Couple things, since we're taking this out of order. One, I would ask that we put that item back on, Mr. Manager, the Commissioners and County Managers' announcements behind that, so that we still can control this meeting at some sort. Commissioner Jung. Secondly, I would ask that, yesterday, I spent the day with Mr. Solero. He took time out of his day off to visit with residents with me in regards to Galena, Andrew Lane, some number of different residents throughout South Valleys, and I agree with Commissioner Herman, something needs to be done now. I don't necessarily agree in regards to what that looks like, whether it's just funds to those people, but I think we do need to address the ditch concerns. I know that unfortunately, none of us have a direct line to Mother Nature and can ask her to turn the water off. However, this is an extraordinary event that we are kind of experiencing right now. We've never seen anything of this wet weather in regards to magnitude in quite some time. So it is a challenge, and one thing that I continue to tell citizens is that, you know, we're learning, as you are learning about this event. Unfortunately, the residents are the ones that suffer the outcome of this. So we are trying to do what we can from a county standpoint to help you. It just is, there are a number of challenges throughout the county, so we are addressing that. But once again, we'd ask for the ditch and maintenance and different things like that based upon this year's events to come back to us. I'd like to see that report sooner rather than later. Secondly, I want to talk about Steamboat Valley. There is a current, there is a current plan by the City of Reno to annex a piece of property that is not, that is within their sphere of influence, but out on Rhodes Road, which is extremely far outside of the reaches of the City of Reno. Once again, in my opinion, a overreach into the county. They have, it has no business of doing development that far into the county at this time, being that they have no county development, I mean, city development around that. So I would urge our counterparts at the City of Reno to deny this annexation plan and also a master plan amendment for these certain developers. And I would be hopeful that they would be listening to that. I'm working with the citizens to make that happen as well. Also, one last thing. I would like to, man, I got thrown off right there with that comment, so actually, at this time, I'll kind of stop right there. So can we share, Hartung? Oh, I know what it was, just looking at you, remind me. I did also. Yeah. That ATB billing is one I brought back up at last week's, on the 14th meeting in front of Mr. Mathers. I think it is something I would, I would hope, Mrs. Hill, you are here with us in the office right now. Hopefully, this is your office. Maybe, Mr. Manager, if you could direct us to the proper staff. But I would like to have ATB contacted immediately and get some sort of answer within the next couple weeks. I would like, because quite a few of my citizens have called me about a bogus bill and wondered why they're getting charged a late fee. It just seems like this was a blanket late fee that went across the county, which is ridiculous. And I would ask that that be rectified immediately. So please, if we can get staff on that as soon as possible. That was all I have. Mr. Hartung, Christian Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And on that, piggybacking on that, we have the right within the contract, because Mr. Peterson sent me the contract, we have the right to ask them to come before us. So I think that's what we need to do. We need to just ask them to come out and let's talk in public. So that's, piggybacking on that. I would still like, Mr. Manager, to have the annexation agreement come to us because I believe that hopscotching, as it were, is violation of the annexation agreement. It is not contiguous. And I know that there was some precedent set a number of years ago by annexing way out in the Winnebago Ranch area, and the assertion at the time was that it was contiguous because it was connected by a road. So I'm a little concerned with this, and I would like to see what's actually in the annexation agreement. I think that there is a reason for concern.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Herman.
I just wanted to add one little feature to our flooding in Lemon Valley, and that is the fact that due to all the, you know, unwelcome flooding, Swan Lake is what's causing the damage that's happening right now because it's rising a few inches every couple hours. So that's really serious stuff, something we've got to think about in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Burke Bigler, did you have something to add? Do you have something to add? No? All right. Seeing now, we'll close item nine and take it back to item four. Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Manager.
Ms. Chair, item four is Introduction of New Washoe County Employees. So we'd have Commissioners down in front and have our employees line up, and they'll come down and introduce themselves.
Commissioners, County Manager, I am Alicia Seifelt Burke Bigler, and I work for Social Services as an Account Clerk 2.
My name is Melanie Lever. I'm the new Purchasing and Contracts Manager in the Comptroller's Office.
Good morning. My name is Kari Estrada. I'm with the County Manager's Office as a Senior Fiscal Analyst.
I'm Jay Johnson. I work in the Technology Services Department, GIS. I'm a Systems Developer 2.
My name is Joe Prouche. I am the newest Planner in Planning and Development, and really happy to be here. Thank you.
My name is Casey Berry. I'm with the Child Protective Services Adoptions Unit. I'm the Office Support Specialist.
My name's John Brown. I'm with the Voters Office as an Office Support Specialist.
Commissioners, County Manager, Jamie Rodriguez. I am a Management Analyst handling Legislative Affairs for the County Manager's Office.
I'm Jamie.
What a wonderful, this is always my favorite part of these meetings, is to welcome the new employees to our county family. You don't know how tremendous it is to have people, good people, that work for us. So thank you and welcome to the family. Mr. Manager.
Ms. Chair, next item is item five, which is Presentation of Excellence in Public Service Certificates. And Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and the professional development of all employees, administered by the Human Resources Department. Excellence in Public Service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. The completion of these courses over two years demonstrates the employee's commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement and to Washoe County's journey of excellence. And today, we're very pleased to recognize that commitment. We start with Julie Avala, Legal Secretary Supervisor for Juvenile Services, who has completed Essentials of Management Development. Aaron is Public Health Supervisor for the Health District and has completed the Essentials of Management Development. Congratulations to Aaron. Lisa Carnes, Deputy Clerk 2 for Reno Justice Court, has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness. Nick Stewart, Park Ranger 1 for Regional Parks and Open Space, has completed Essentials of Personal Effectiveness. And Sue Councilman, Office Support Specialist for the District Attorney's Office, has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Congratulations to Sue. And finally, Pamela Mattson, Account Clerk 2 for the Comptroller's Office, has completed the Promote Yourself Certificate Program. Congratulations, Pam. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And as Commissioner Jung used to say continuously, I love what she says, you know, people need to take, thank you for taking advantage of these. This is a free service to all of our employees, and thank you for all the department heads for allowing your staff to participate in these programs. It's a tremendous amount of wealth. You know, education is something that you can't, somebody can never take from you, so please, take advantage of what the county has to offer. It'll only help you, you know, continue with your career. So thank you very much. Big round of applause for everybody. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to Proclamations.
We are on Proclamations, and the first is 6A1 on our agenda, proclaiming heartfelt gratitude to the many staff and volunteers for their efforts during and after the 2016 Little Valley Fire and the January 2017 flooding. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. One of my, one of the good duties of being Chair, I get to dictate which ones I get to read, and this is one. Yeah, I am Commissioner Bob Lucy. I live at Washoe County. Actually, we have some wonderful people here from Red Cross. I'd like to invite people from the Red Cross up today to participate in this proclamation. You know, this is, we have had a series of tremendous events in the last few months, from fires to flooding to snow, massive snow. I joke continuously with people that the next thing we have to see is locusts because I, pretty much, we have experienced every natural disaster we possibly can, aside from an earthquake lately. But we're trying to, we're trying to hold the bar right there, yeah, and let's not jinx it. But based upon all these amazing feats of nature that we've had to endure over the last few months, we've had a number of entities and emergency groups and response teams that have in emergency groups and response teams that have acted tirelessly to help support the county and support all the residents within the area, all half million that live here in Washoe County. And they've done it based upon their volunteer time and it's tremendous. And I can't thank them enough for all the assistance that they have given. And so today we're going to read a proclamation on behalf of the, those volunteers and that assistance. So, whereas our region relies upon a multi-tiered emergency response system for the protection of lives and property during these times of emergency. And whereas this emergency response system could not exist without those dedicated volunteers from agencies throughout the region who respond to all types of emergency events, including wildland fires and flooding. And whereas the American Red Cross has a proud tradition of providing compassionate care to those in need, the Citizen Corps trains and equips volunteers to make our region better prepared for emergencies, the volunteer organizations active in disasters provide faith-based, community-based, and non-governmental organizations or organizations to deliver services when, when communities are affected by crisis. And whereas during events of the Little Valley, during the events of Little Valley Fire in October 2016 and January 2017 flooding, volunteers from throughout the region responded in an overwhelming effort to protect lives, property, and as well as assisted in recovery operations. And they are now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners proclaims a heartfelt gratitude for many of the staff and volunteers for their tremendous efforts during and after the 2016 Little Valley Fire and 2017, January 2017 flooding. The board extends its appreciation and thanks to many volunteers of the American Red Cross, the Washoe Citizens Corps, and which includes the county emergency response teams and medical reserve corps and other members, agency, other member agencies of volunteer organizations active in disasters, including but not limited to the Salvation Army, the LDS Helping Hands, Team Rubicon, Christian Aid Ministries, 211 Public Call Takers, and the Amateur Radio Emergency Services dated this 21st day of February 2017, signed by myself, Bob Lucy, Chairman of the Washoe County Commission. So with that, our Communications Department, who also played a major, major role during these events, has put together a little video to inform residents about everything that goes into an emergency declaration, which this board declared back during some of these emergencies. And it's important to know, especially after Governor, Governor Sandoval announced that we received disaster declaration from FEMA on Saturday, on Saturday, to pay for some of the disaster relief that we're going to get, which is fantastic. This is also a great example of how Washoe County works together and with the regional partners to provide resources and services to all Washoe County residents. So with that, I'd like to play a short video for all the Commissioners
I'd like to start out by saying, the National Weather Service has been predicting a big event for our region. On Friday, the sixth, we declared a state of emergency so we could preposition state assets.
I have a motion by Commissioner Harton, second by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. If opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The National Weather Service alerted us that there was an atmospheric river that had the potential to bring storms, snow, and then warm rain on top of snow that could cause flooding in our region. And that's what began the cycle and the transition from planning and training to an alert mode. We activated our Regional Emergency Operations Center and our Regional Emergency Operations Plan so that all the 50 agencies, jurisdictions, the two cities, the two tribes could all come together and focus efforts on response, saving lives and protecting property.
We have to make sure that our, our citizens are safe and this is what allows us to do
One day this week I was sandbagging and trying to prevent, you know, people from getting wiped out in the flood and the very next day I've got forty inches of snow on the ground. Everyone in Washoe County's Community Services Department is working extremely hard right now to clear the roads and, and the drainages and the, and the ditches and, and maintaining flows of this water that's coming off the mountain now and, and keeping the roads open, keeping people safe. That's our number one priority.
And now we are in the recovery phase as we're looking at preliminary damage assessments and determining do we meet the threshold for state and federal assistance.
We administer the grant program that FEMA provides in major disasters. And our part of that is to collect the data, submit it to our chief, which then goes to our governor to justify a declaration for a major disaster.
Once we get the formal letter, then we accept it and we start working on it right away. We get it to headquarters as quickly as we can because there's, there's people out here that need assistance. We try to do everything we can in a, you know, in a very quick manner to get, to get a declaration or to at least get the decision as soon as possible.
You know, clearly floods cause millions of dollars of damage and it will still be weeks, maybe months before we have an accurate figure on what the damage is. It's, it's interesting. We've spent a lot of time in this region looking at floods and looking at what we can do to lessen floods. The Living River Project, things like building the flood wall that the Reno Sparks Indian Colony spearheaded, some of the properties that we bought to allow the river to expand and contract and not affect homes, raising homes. All of those contributed to the reduction of flood damages on the river corridor itself. The tricky part is when we have a storm cell that comes and parks over another part of the county and overwhelms our drainages, ditches, and creeks. That's harder to prevent and harder to assess damage. But we have some very smart people right now out looking at those and we're going to develop some mitigation projects. The goal being that each time we have a disaster, that there is less damage.
I want to thank all the Communications Department for putting that, that video together. That was a wonderful video that kind of showed just a, a brief and small picture into what we have. So this time I'd invite members from the Red Cross and community to speak.
For the record, Zanny Marsh. I'm the Executive Director of the American Red Cross of Northern Nevada and I have whatever it is that's going around. So I'm really trying to beef up my voice. On behalf of the volunteers who are 200 plus strong in Northern Nevada and, and six employees who are on payroll, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation and really the recognition that we are but just one piece in a very large system of emergency response responders who came together in the most extraordinary way in January and six weeks in, we're still going strong. And it is, it's an honor and very humbling to work alongside all of our partners and to know that as Erin Kenniston said in the video, that the work that we are doing saves lives and protects property. And I can't think of a more honorable call and I can't think of more honorable partners to work alongside. So thank you very much.
Thank you for recognition of Amateur Radio Emergency Service. I'm Bob Miller, the Emergency Coordinator for Amateur Radio Emergency Service. And we were on call most of the time during both the Little Valley Fire and the, and the flood event. In the event, we were needed in support communications. And on the 10th, I received an email from emergency, or Erin Kenniston, and we were requested to provide emergency communications between 911 dispatch and Sutcliffe and Nixon area. Due to the loss of the 800 megahertz system, I sent one of my staff out and we maintained communications by amateur radio for 36 hours until the system was back up and operating. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Kane. With, I'm the VOWAD Chairman. I won't talk about the last floods. You know, I think what we need to do is concentrate on what's going on right now. I just gave your chairman some business cards for VOWAD that you can pass out to your people in Lemon Valley, in the community because we have the resources of all the volunteer paces in Northern Nevada to help out, sandbag and help to clean whatever people might need to do. So definitely get the word out with these cards. If you need more, just email me. The email's on the card and we have a lot of resources just waiting to go and help our community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Kane. I thank for the recognition for, for that. And I was with Hunger Valley Fire Department and I'm also a member of VOWAD. And we were sent out doing sandbag throughout with Hunger Valley during the Sunday and Monday of the flood. And then we were also sent out to Sutcliffe to assist with sandbag and water supply for reloading their trucks with water to give throughout the community. Thank you.
So I'd like to offer a big round of applause for all these people today. And before, and before we step away, I really want to, there's a couple other people that we did miss in the proclamation that played a very crucial role. You know, Governor Sandoval, I want to thank his office for all the help that they did during the flood events and Little Valley Fire. They were very attentive and very helpful. Also, like I mentioned just briefly, you know, the current administration did recognize Nevada as a natural disaster and is offering funding for us for, as a state. So, and I want to thank my fellow Commissioners and the County Manager's Office for all the work that you did in the time of need and on the extra time that you exerted on top of your normal standards to do, to stand up and help your citizens of all your districts and as a whole. So thank you very much. All right. Can we, can we get a picture?
There we go. There we go. Yeah, I can't, there we go. Perfect. Oh, perfect. Three, two, one more. Three, two.
And you need to get a picture of those shoes.
Three, two.
She is so perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Aaron?
Thank you.
This is for you.
Mr. Manager?
Can we do them all? Can we do them both at the same time?
Next proclamation is item six A two on our agenda and that is a proclamation proclaiming February 21st, 2017 as Brian and Laura Polian Day. And I know Alice Ledesma from Social Services is here as well.
Good morning. And I'm Commissioner Jung. Well, that's what it says on here. Good morning. I will read this proclamation and in fact, Brian and Laura are not here with us today, but we're going to read this proclamation for, on their behalf anyway. Whereas Washoe County Department of Social Services sometimes finds special people who care so deeply for permanent loving homes for children that their influence is embedded in the recruitment of adoption homes and finding permanent connections for foster children. And whereas Brian and Laura Polian are those special people having been the face energy and drive behind an exciting and innovative adoption campaign featuring the University of Nevada Reno Wolfpack. And whereas Brian and Laura Polian gave countless interviews and opened their own adoption experience to help other children waiting, awaiting permanent homes resulting in many children in Washoe County finding forever homes. And whereas the Washoe County Department of Social Services staff will be forever grateful to the Polian family for their love, compassion, and promotion of adoption in our community. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim February 21st, 2017 as is Brian and Laura Polian Day. In Washoe County, in honor of Brian and Laura Polian for their timeless efforts to support and promote the adoption of the very vulnerable children in our community, signed and dated this day, the 21st of February 2017 and signed by our county manager, I mean our county, our county commission chair. He could be the manager too if you want. Come up. Thank you, thank you.
You're spreading the wealth, aren't you, Mr. Slaughter? Chair, Mr. Lucy, the Commissioners and Mr. Slaughter. I am for the record, Alice Ledesma. I'm the Division Director of Social Services. And on behalf of Brian and Laura, I would like to accept this proclamation. Unfortunately, the Polians, although they tried very hard to be here, could not. They're on their way, hopefully have gotten there without the weather to Indiana. Briefly, I would like to tell you why the Polians are so instrumental in our endeavor to change and improve our recruitment and retention efforts, but also why they are so deserving of this recognition. As you know, the department's partnership with the university through the support and vision of the board was immediately successful in improving our numbers of attendees, the people that became licensed. And through training, they, we've improved the numbers and absolutely have changed the way that we've gone through recruitment, training, and the way we've looked at recruitment and foster parenting as a whole. That partnership has had the biggest impact on the relationships we've made in the community. And the change in direction was really focused and exemplified in our relationship with Polians. Brian and Laura embodied that instinctively and selflessly from the very moment of their involvement. They believed in the mission and direction of the campaigns and undertook any invitation to help with passion and enthusiasm. Despite our contract having no responsibilities towards them, they quietly lent their personal experience and time to encourage, support, and help convince people to join us in the work and the reward of watching families heal and form everlasting relationships. They literally never said no to us. They took every invitation to be interviewed, to speak at engagements, to show up and say thank you to foster parents, and to visit with kids and let them hang out with coaches and the players. I have not actually experienced this type of support and unlimited availability in my 30 years of being here. It's, it was really work and the reward of watching families heal and form everlasting relationships. They literally never said no to us. They took every invitation to be interviewed, to speak at engagements, to show up and say thank you to foster parents, and to visit with kids and let them hang out with coaches and the players. I have not actually experienced this type of support and unlimited availability in my 30 years of being here. It's, it was really actually pretty interesting to see, and it changed our direction, and we really appreciate it. So thank you on behalf of the Polians for this highest of county thank yous and for allowing me the chance to tell you briefly about the work that we've had with them. I know that Brian Polian's reputation was not for being quiet and a soft-spoken man. But when it came to families and children that needed connection and helping our community to see the serious importance of worthwhile impact of this investment, he was a humble man and easily yet lost for words in his gratitude to being able to help in this. So thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You bet. Should we do a picture?
Oh, we don't need a picture.
You don't need a picture?
We're all so safe.
All right. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to accept the proclamations. I have a motion to accept the proclamations. I have a second by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, at this time, we are on to donations. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to direct the public's attention to items 6B1, B2, and B3. Monetary donations to the Washoe County Regional Animal Services for the last quarter totaled $6,253, and this will be used for the humane care and treatment of sick and/or injured, stray, abandoned, or at-risk animals that we receive. And we are very appreciative of these thoughtful contributions. If you look at the list, there's some from a dollar all the way up to $500. So that's how this adds up, and that shows you people give what they can because they just love animals in this community. 6B2, we are accepting a donation from the Washoe County Honorary Deputy Sheriff's Association of approximately 350 aluminum frame glass windows, which has a $7,000 value, and it will be used by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for training purposes. And then finally, 6B3, Burning Man donated $13,500 for the Gerlach Combo Fire Department personnel costs during the festival. So this is above and beyond what they had to do as terms of government contracting and services. This was a nod of appreciation to our combo fire department. So I'm sure Commissioner Herman's happy for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Move to accept, can I get a motion to accept donations?
Some of them. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager, item seven.
Public comment.
I'm sorry, public comment. Do we have public comments signed in?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much. See, I knew it. I could have told you. I'm thinking the installation of a buzzer. I'm waiting for technology supposedly. Someone told me that there was going to be technology. I, anticipation of technology.
Item seven is discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the chair or the board to be of critical significance to Washoe County. And I'm very pleased to introduce Jamie Rodriguez to present this item.
Hi, Commissioners. So last week, there's not a huge update. There's still lots of presentations happening at session. We're starting to get into lots of hearings of the bills, so going forward, we should have much more detailed updates for you. Currently, about 450 bills have been introduced. We're tracking a little over half of those, about 250. For the five bills that you brought up last week that you wanted us to track, there's been no real movement on any of those, but we'll be sure to let you know if and when there are. The one exception to that would be the AB 140. That's the bill that revises the boundary line between Carson City and Washoe County. And we were hoping to get direction from you as to what we'd like to do with that bill.
Ms. Chair, if I could, just give a brief introduction on that bill.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
This is a bill requested by Assemblyman Kramer. And the specifics of it are there are about 12 properties in the Southern Morse portion of Washoe County, right on the border of Carson City. The property owners there approached Assemblyman Kramer with this request. Staff has a concern with, not with the property owners and their specific request. And I did meet with Mr. Kramer and a property owner, one of the property owners. And part of the concern relates to service provision. But staff has the concern simply of the precedent that this would set. In my knowledge, all of the past boundary changes between counties that we've been involved in have involved vacant property, vacant land. The concern that we would have would be the precedent that it sets, and really not just in Washoe County, but statewide, where there are concerns by property owners next to a border and in a sense approach the neighboring county to be moved into that county. If there are concerns with service issues, we can address those. We can, you know, I'm confident that Washoe County can address those kinds of concerns. Again, it's more the precedent that it set than addressing the individual property owners in this particular case.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I would agree. These are, the citizens of Duck Hill, you know, has been challenging, challenging at best to assist them in the services that they are requesting. And it's an interesting area, but I would agree that it sets a precedent that we don't, would not like to pursue as a county to allow changes to our county line based upon challenges with services. So I think we should address the service requests responsibly and as quickly as possible, but not just change a county line and make it another county's or another city's for that exam, for this reason specifically, their problem versus ours. I think we need to own up to our challenges and take care of it. So that would be my position on this bill specifically. I don't know if we're going to take any position today. I think we want to see where these things go, get direction to staff at this time to take things. And Commissioner Burke Bigler, I know, has been deeply involved with a lot of the bills with Mrs. Rodriguez and Mr. Slaughter down at Carson. So I would just make sure that we can continue to carry that message until that time that this board needs to take a position on these certain bills, because as you had pointed out, Ms. Rodriguez, we still are very early in session and that presentations are still being made, so. But I appreciate you, appreciate giving the update on that bill, so.
Okay. I think the only other issue of notice is that we haven't scheduled to give our presentation of the county to the Assembly Government Affairs Committee. That'll be on March 7th.
Great.
What time? That's, they're at 8:30.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Can you give me a quick update on AB 43?
Ms. Chair, if we could, while she's looking up that specific bill, there was another issue related to the legislature. I mean, again, not for action, but just as an update. I believe many of you are aware that the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency has approved a legislative memorandum of cooperation. And I did receive a request from the Director, Executive Director of Regional Planning to have that reviewed by the board. I followed up with the Director with some questions that I had regarding, when was the, questions of when was the last time we had one of these memorandums approved regionally? I also asked about the process of development of the MOU. And then also, again, related to when was, when was the last, I don't recall, there was one in 2015, and if not, why, what was the reasoning behind not having one in 2015? So I've made that request back in a form of questions to the Director, and when I get those answers, we'll be back in front of you with that MOU and possible, and the review of that MOU by the board.
Great, thank you.
AB 43, it's been referred to the committee. There's no schedule yet of when it'll be heard.
Okay.
So at this point, there's no, there's no other real update on it.
And AB 43 is the discussion on taxes, correct? On the, on the tax abatement, correct? For property owners. Would that be Senator Kiekefer's bill?
That is not.
That is not?
No.
Okay.
His bill isn't out yet.
Okay.
If I could, is that the NACO bill?
It is the NACO bill.
That's the bill sponsored by NACO. There's been two hearings on the topic of taxes, property taxes.
Right. Assembly Taxation and Senate Revenue and Economic Development did joint hearings last Tuesday and Thursday on the topic of the abatements. So there was presentations more as education to the committee members of the topic as a whole, but neither of the bills have been scheduled to be heard yet.
Okay. And Mr. Manager, is, are we planning to testify on behalf of the NACO bills in regards to, I know Park County has plans to testify on the property tax bills. Is Washoe County looking into possibly participating in those testimonies or no?
We, Ms. Chair, we are, we are considering that. Again, there's a, you know, as you know, an intricate involvement of strategy and discussion of what the appropriate time, appropriate location, when they have the hearings, do we, you know, do we present? So as we, as we work towards, and I think this particular bill is going to have a long life in the session, and we'll have plenty of opportunities throughout that process to do those. And I think as a strategy point, we'll talk with staff, talk with our lobbyists, and at the appropriate time, come to the board with recommendation on positions and on testimony on those bills.
Okay, great. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you. I do have a little concern about the fact that so many rules have already been waived at this session. And we, we may not get notification, I mean, obviously, we will get notification, but we may not get notification in time to bring it to this board. And so I would ask you, Mr. Manager, if you would think about how we're going to handle that particular problem, because some of these bills we do, we will need to testify on, and we will not have had time to get approval from this full board.
So if I could address that, Mr. Chair, or attempt to address that, there's a couple ways we handle that. One is, you may recall, early on, maybe a month or so ago, the board approved a set of legislative principles. Staff uses those, and our lobbyists use those, to give us guidance in those situations. We also have in our legislative process, process where as county manager, I can make some decisions in consultation with your legislative liaison. There may be times when we have testified on a position, and then we'll have to come back to the board to tell you, this is what we did. And if we were wrong, again, in my, in my judgment and in consultation with your legislative liaison, if we didn't fully represent the board's position, then we'll go back and correct that. But we have, we do have ways we work through this. And it is early in the session for so many rules to have been set aside.
Thank you, Commissioner Burke Bigler. All right, Ms. Rodriguez, is there anything further to report? You got enough direction from us at this time?
I do, thank you.
All right. So we're not going to take a position or no need for a vote on item seven. Is there, do we need to take public comment? Is there a public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much. There's no public comment on this item. All right. Or, Mr. Manager, item eight, public comment.
Item eight is your final public comment.
Do we have anybody signed in for the final?
There is nobody signed in.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair.
Mr., Ms., Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Could we reopen nine?
We could reopen nine. So let's move and reopen item nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, two things that I would like to point out. One is that Lake Tahoe has gone up four feet in water increase since, and that's in the February 20th report. So as of February 20th, the lake has increased four feet. We, a normal snowpack year, it would only, all the melting and everything in normal snowpack year, it would only increase two feet by the end of the season when they stop measuring it, which is, of course, end of the year, end of the winter. And since our snowpack is at 200% around the lake, the sense is that this lake could easily go up another four feet, and, which will mean that there will be automatic releases from the dam down the river for a period of time until they keep it stabilized, they know it's stabilized. And that's a very important deal, because that's more water in our river for a longer period of time this summer. But it also will be necessary to make sure that lakefront properties are not being flooded all around the lake. And since it, the only exit is in, is the Truckee River, so that will come right down through the city of Reno. Secondly, I just received a notice that Highway 50 at Bridalvale Falls, which is in Eldorado County, right above Myers, collapsed into the ravine today, just a few minutes ago, I mean, just about an hour ago. And so there, everybody is watching Highway 50 in all of the rock-prone slide areas and watching it very carefully, and I'm sure they'll be watching other ones. But yes, it did, it just collapsed. I have pictures, if you want to see them, just collapsed into the ravine.
Wow, that's crazy.
Thank you.
Hopefully, those citizens are okay.
Think about that. That's, that's an incredible amount. If you didn't hear that, that wasn't on record.
Every foot that Lake Tahoe rises is 122,400 acre feet. Each inch is 10,000, about 200 acre feet of water. Every inch on Lake Tahoe. And that's our capacity.
It's incredible, yeah.
It's a huge amount of water.
It really is.
Huge amount of water.
All right. Is there any other comments from Commissioners? Mr. Manager, do you have anything to add at this time? All right. And I just have one last thing and then we'll adjourn here. Just, you know, a piece of, you know, technology in front of me to impromptu for public comment would be phenomenal. Hopefully, we can find some time or somewhere in the budget to get that done.
I'm suggesting a cattle program.
Yeah. If we get that done, that'd be great. All right. With that being said and seeing no other comments from the Commissioners, we are adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.